Welcome to the February the 12th Planning Commission Regular Meeting. I now call the meeting to order and ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Palier.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Greenberg is absent. Hicks?
Here.
Mako?
Here.
Palier?
Here.
Shapaka?
Here.
Soriano's absent. Tamarkin?
Here.
So we do have a quorum, and there will be no ties tonight, so that's good. Next item on the agenda are additions or corrections to the agenda. I believe we do have one. Ms. McGuire?
We do have one addition to the agenda. We need to approve the minutes for the Joint Council Planning Commission Workshop from January 21st, 2025, and that is file number 2025-0032, Planning Commission Joint Workshop Minutes.
Thank you. So next item is the approval of said minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from our regular meeting from the 22nd and the workshop from the 21st?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Palier. Is there a second?
Second, Mako.
Second by Mr. Mako. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Tamarkin?
Mr. Hicks, I was absent from the workshops. I don't know if you want to divide them into two votes because I'll have to abstain from the workshop and not the last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Tamarkin. We will have a roll call on the regular meeting minutes from the 22nd of January, please.
Palier?
Yes.
Mako?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Shapaka?
Yes.
Soriano absent. Tamarkin?
Yes.
And Greenberg absent.
So now can we please have a roll call for the approval of the workshop meeting minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, the roll call.
Yes.
Palier?
Yes.
Mako?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Shapaka?
Abstain.
Tamarkin?
Abstain.
All right, the motions pass. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the swearing in of applicants and speakers. So anybody wishing to speak at this evening's meeting, please direct your attention to our Assistant City Attorney for further instructions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are now at the public hearing portion of the meeting. The public hearing will operate as follows. Administrative staff will make a presentation or comment on the application. The applicant or their representative may then make a presentation or comment on the application. The applicant has 10 minutes to present, and additional time may be requested. Permission is at the discretion of the chair. Public comment will then be open for three minutes allowed per speaker. Additional time may be requested. Permission is at the discretion of the chair. Speakers must complete a speaker slip and come to the podium and state their name and address. The applicant will then be given 10 minutes to comment. Additional time may be requested. Permission is at the discretion of the chair. If there is more than one application pending for a particular address, the presentation on each application may be consolidated and presented as one. At this time, will persons wishing to present testimony this evening, please rise and raise your right hand to be sworn in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? If so, state I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Roth. We do have one application this evening, and I'd like to ask the clerk to please read it into the record.
We have application V-0004-2025 to consider a variance application to vary Chapter 1103.07E, large lot residential of the codified ordinances of the City of Gehanna for property located at Zero Founder's Ridge Drive, Lot 35, parcel ID 025-010-439, current zoning R1 large lot residential, Anastasio Alamar applicant.
Thank you. We'll now turn the meeting over to the administration for their presentation.
This is a variance application for a property on the west side of Founder's Ridge Drive. The property, as well as the entire neighborhood, is zoned R1, and as you can see on this aerial, all of the other lots along Founder's Ridge Drive are developed, while this one is still undeveloped. The applicant is requesting approval of a variance to reduce the northern side yard setback from 15 feet to five feet. For all properties zoned R1, the side yard setback for the principal structure is 15 feet. As mentioned, the site is undeveloped and currently is covered by dense foliage. There's also a 30-foot preservation zone along the front of the site, and the neighborhood plat states that there can be no development or clearing in any preservation zones. Development includes structures, driveways, fences, et cetera. So essentially, preservation zones cannot be touched or modified in any way. Preservation zones are established to protect existing natural features and are typically located in rear yards and sometimes side yards. It's very unusual to see a preservation zone in a front yard like this. On the left is an aerial view of the site, where you can see many of the trees and other plants that are currently there, and then you can see the adjacent properties to the north and south, and how close those are to the property lines and do not meet current setbacks as the neighborhood was developed between 25 and 30 years ago. The image on the right is a street view image, so this is the current view of the property from Founder's Ridge Drive. Here's a site plan that was submitted by the applicant. There is a lot going on here just because there are multiple constraints for the site. The most notable are the preservation zones shown in green, so there's a 20-foot preservation zone in the rear, and then a 30-foot one in the front that covers over just half of the front property line. There are also easements shown in yellow, and then the red line indicates the setbacks for the zoning district. It's 15-foot side yard setbacks, 25-foot rear yard, and 35-foot front yard setbacks. And then the house is shown in purple and the driveway in blue. And as mentioned, the driveway is not able to encroach into the preservation zone at all, so essentially, the only location for that driveway is on the right-hand side where it's shown here. But because of that driveway location, the house had to be shifted to the right in order for the garage to line up with the driveway, which is why the house is only five feet from the northern property line, but it is outside of that five-foot easement. Here is a conceptual elevation that was submitted by the applicant. The appearance of the home may change between now and when the building permit is filed, but this is just to give an idea of what the house could look like. And then you can see the garage on the right-hand side there. The variance that is being requested is for Chapter 1103.07E, which states that the principal structure must be at least 15 feet from all side property lines, and the proposed house is only five feet from the northern property line. This is the standard variance criteria that must be met for the application to be approved. So it's not likely to result in substantial damage to the character of the neighborhood, not likely to result in damage to adjoining properties, not likely to affect the delivery of government services, not likely to result in environmental impacts greater than what's typical for other lots in the neighborhood, and it's necessary for the economical use of the property, and the variance is not likely to undermine the objectives of the land use plan. Finally, staff recommends approval of the variance as submitted. The preservation zones, specifically the one in the front yard, create a unique circumstance on the lot and have likely contributed to the fact that it remains undeveloped today. There are also easements on the site, which create some additional restrictions, and the applicant states that the variance is necessary to orient the house on the site to align with the driveway. Finally, based on some rough measurements taken in GIS, many homes in the neighborhood are only five to 10 feet from the side property lines, so approving this variance would not negatively impact the neighborhood character. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now open the public portion of the hearing and ask if the applicant would like to speak first. So if the applicant is in the audience, the floor is yours. If you could state your name, address, and relationship to the project.
My name's Anastasio Alamar. My address is 129 Crowes Avenue, and you guys need me to turn this on, or can you hear?
I can't hear very well, so...
I can't hear.
How about now?
Yeah.
That's better. Thank you.
Give me a sec to adjust it. My name's Anastasio Alamar. I live at 129 Crowes Avenue in Westerville, Ohio. My relationship is I'm the builder for the client. The reason we requested the variance was mainly because of the restrictions of the land. Not only do we have the preservation zone on the front, but we also have a preservation zone on the back. For example, if we didn't have that preservation zone on the back, we could have pushed the house further back to try to account for room for vehicles to enter through that driveway, but because we can't go any further back and we can't put the driveway on the left, the only option we had was to request a variance. We looked at the neighborhood, neighbors next door, pretty much the majority of that neighborhood is five foot. Some of them are even closer than five foot. So approving this wouldn't be anything out of the ordinary for the neighborhood, and we request that you guys consider approval for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
You may remain here.
Please don't leave, but you're welcome to sit back down. We may have some questions for you later. I do have a number of speaker slips, which I will read out. So when your name's called, if you still wish to speak, please come forward. If you decide you don't want to speak, that's your prerogative, and then there'll be an opportunity for speakers that did not submit a slip ahead of time. And then the applicant will be given time to rebut at the end of the questions. My first speaker slip is Mary Frankovich. And as a reminder, you do have three minutes for comments.
Hello, my name is Mary Frankovich. I reside at 645 Founder's Ridge Drive, and I am the President of the Founder's Ridge Homeowners Association. Our preference for the homeowners association is that we retain a 10-foot side lot setback as was set out in the Plata survey for our subdivision, and it's also included in our deed restrictions under Article 1, Section 20B, which shows a 10-foot side... For lots 1 through 38 inclusive shall be a minimum of a 10-foot side setback. We would prefer that the variance we made on the preservation zone on the front of the property to trim that back a bit to make room for the driveway. The reason that the undeveloped lot has not been... The reason it hasn't been sold is that it hasn't been on the market until about a year ago, and so over the course of the last 25 years, it has not been on the market. And the 30-foot preservation zone in the front, we believe the developer put that in so that the car headlights that are coming down Morgan Lane wouldn't shine directly into the house. So minimizing the preservation zone a little bit to retain the 10-foot side lot lines that are shown on our Plata survey is the preferred way to go by the Founder's Ridge Homeowners Association. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker slip is Mr. Xavier.
I reside... My name's Manuel Xavier. I reside in 665 Founder's Ridge Drive. The reason why I moved in this area and built my house is because of the fact that the homes are not close together, and now I find that that's not going to be true if this variance is allowed, all right? I would rather you not pass this variance. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker slip is Tom Kaiser.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tom Kaiser. I reside at 653 Founder's Ridge Drive. That is Lot 36. Lot 35 is the adjoining lot that's under discussion tonight. I'm also the Vice President of the Founder's Ridge Homeowners Association, so kind of wearing two different hats, but I am in opposition to the variance. I know over the years, we've lived there for 25 years, I think all the people that live in Founder's Ridge have made some kind of sacrifice in terms of how they build in order to preserve the nature of the development, and that is the reason most of us live there. I concur with the remarks that Mary Frankovich said earlier, and I don't want to repeat those, as to the reasons why this lot has not sold before and been developed. I know over the past 25... I've lived there 25 years, and I've had a number of people approach me over the years inquiring about the availability of that lot to build a house. I referred them to the owner of the lot, and nothing ever became of it. So I think that is the reason, rather than any preservation zone or any other setback lines or anything else, is the primary reason why this hasn't been developed. So I hope that... I agree that it would be better, preferable, if we're going to change anything, is to do the preservation zone and keep the 10-foot setback lines. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker slip is Ms. Lori Jax. I hope I said that right. I'm sorry. Okay.
My name is Lori Jax. I live at 358 Morgan Lane. I'm also a trustee of the Founder's Ridge Homeowners Association. Morgan Lane is the street that tees into Founder's Ridge Drive, right across from the preservation zone, and I concur with the comments earlier that the reason that George Parker, the developer of Founder's Ridge, left that area as a preservation zone was to provide a view whenever you're stopped at the gate, waiting for the gate to open, to see greenery rather than a house, and to shield the house from the headlights of cars when it's dark. I'm going to speak to the variance standards A and E. With respect to the character of the neighborhood, the R1 qualities of open space, peace, greenery, and privacy are extraordinarily important to Founder's Ridge residents. They're why most of us chose to live there. My starter home had five-feet setbacks, and when we were looking for a new home or a lot to build the new home, one of our joking characteristics was we didn't want to be able to tell what brand of beer our neighbor was drinking when they were sitting out on their deck. I don't think that Tom and Manuel and Sylvia want that either. The home sites in Founder's Ridge, the acreage totals up to about 20 acres. Founder's Ridge residents pay for an additional 11 acres, nearly 11 acres, of open and green and wooded space through the homeowners association. So again, this is extraordinarily important to have that space and separation and greenery. In addition, five of the 52 homes, prospective homes, ones still under construction, the homeowner bought more than one lot in order to assure privacy. So five out of 52 homes have... One resident has three lots, two have two lots each, and two more residents have 1.5 lots. Space and greenery and separation is very important. Allowing five-foot setbacks is appropriate for an R3 lot with a maximum coverage of the property of 2,400 square feet. It's not appropriate at all for an R1 neighborhood like Founder's Ridge, and variance would absolutely change the essential character of the neighborhood.
Ms. Jax, your time has expired. Do you have some closing remarks to wrap up? You're welcome to take a few more seconds to wrap up your thoughts.
Okay. My last point was with regard to the economical use of the property. You have a handout from Zillow printed today, so the applicant's own marketing materials show that it is economically possible to develop this property with numerous other homes. It just is not possible without this variance to develop this particular home site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker slip is Doug McMillan.
Hello, my name is Doug McMillan. I'm a resident of Gehanna, and I live at 670 Founder's Ridge Drive. I'm on Lot 30 to 35, so I'm just down the street. I am also part of the HOA Board. I'm the Secretary for the Board. For me, the parts that I want to bring out are two important parts that I'd like to discuss. One is about the side setback. I understand from the diagrams that were put up in GIS that several of the lots are close to the five-to-10-feet side setback. The other piece of that, though, is many of those lots on one side are five-to-10 feet but are much more on the other side. So it creates the vision of privacy between the homes that are associated with it. So yes, there are some that are shorter than that, but there are others that are much longer than that. So there's that visual aspect of privacy across the homes. And so my point, and it's been mentioned here several times, is to adjust it by moving it back a little bit further south and adjusting the preservation zone, perhaps that one corner closest to the driveway, to give it the clearance that it needs in reference to that. The other point that I have in reference to what's been proposed in the variance, the design that's in there, and this ties in a little bit with what Lori just mentioned, but the design that's in there for the home is like 3,900 square feet. That lot, even though it's rated an R1, that lot is much smaller than that. It's only like .289 square acres. So it comes out, when you look at the R1 requirements of 30% for use of the land, that 3,900 is way over the standard requirements. That R1 requirement at 30% says it should be set at about 3,700, and that 3,900 doesn't even include the garage. My understanding is the building coverage where that's specified would also include the garage with that. If you include the garage at 850 square feet, you're at over 4,000 square feet from a building coverage perspective and significantly over the 30% requirement. Hopefully, there could be some other type of design that could be used that would allow it to fit within the side setbacks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that would like to comment that has not already turned in a speaker slip? Would the applicant like to respond to the comment?
I just had a few responses, mainly about the preservation zone. Before we applied for a variance and went through this process, we met with the city, and we were of the same thought process as everybody here. Is there a way where we can reduce the preservation zone a little bit? That way, it allows the driveway. But the language on the preservation zone is very specific that we cannot touch anything within the preservation zone, so that was not an option to us to do anything on the front for the preservation zone to be able to build this home. And when we were speaking with the city, that's when we came up with this option to change the setbacks to align with both sides. Both neighbors have similar side setbacks, and not everybody in the community... It's a large community. Not everybody has the five-foot setbacks, but a great portion of them do. So when we filled out this application, we didn't think it would be out of the norm for something like this to happen. So our initial... So our initial thought is, if there were a way to reduce that preservation zone, we're happy to take that option, but we don't have that option currently provided to us. Let me see what else. In terms of why the land hasn't sold, I'm not quite sure, to be honest with you. I, I'm a builder, a customer approached us, they wanted to build this home. It's a wonderful family. The home's going to be north of $1 million. It's going to add value to the, to, to the neighborhood. We're not coming in here to disrupt the neighborhood. Another process we have to go through is we have to seek the approval of the HOA to make sure the home aligns with the community, to make sure the, the quality and the materials and exterior of the home and it's architecturally appealing. So it's still got to go through an approval process from the majority of people that are here today. We just didn't take that option because we wanted to first see if you would grant us the variance. Thank you.
I'll now close the public portion of the, the hearing, and turn it over to the Commission for questions. Now, the Commission might have questions for some speakers, so please stick around, and we'll start on my right with Mr. Tumarkin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Reading through the documents here, and I think, from what I hear from the last speaker, I guess between the speaker and Ms. Kapka, there is no mechanism to adjust the preservation zone. That is in the deed, that is in the plat, and between this commission, between the city, between the Homeowners Association, is there any mechanism to adjust this preservation zone?
No.
So, move, you know, many speakers, you know, I heard, said, hey, let's take 10-foot out of the preservation zone, let's move the driveway 10-foot to the south, move the house 10-foot to the south, everything fits, kind of get inside the red box here. Not an option.
Correct.
Does, I guess between the, again, our applicant and our board, does anybody know how many of the 50-some houses in the community were previously granted variances to build, you know, side setbacks, five to 10 feet from the property line? I just need you at the speaker here, it's because... So tell me again, how many houses are in Founder's Ridge?
There are 57 lots in Founder's Ridge.
Okay, and a couple under the...
What's that?
Couple being under development now, and this one is still...
There are several undeveloped lots. As I said, there are five residents that own more than one, plus two that are owned by brand builders, including Lot 35.
Okay.
I am unaware of any setback variances, and, and I've been there for a long time. The side setback required in our deed restrictions for lots 1 through 38 is 10 feet. In addition to the plat, which, which I believe shows 10 feet for all of those lots. So I am unaware of any variances to the 10-foot setback. I believe the plat establishes 10 feet rather than the 15 feet of R1.
And every single house that is already built or under construction has abided by the 10-foot?
To the best of my knowledge, yes.
Ms. Kapka?
So, a lot of these homes were constructed over 20 years ago, so it's hard to know what the setbacks were back then, and if they were fully enforced. Like I said, the measurements I did were rough estimates on GIS, but there were multiple homes that were under 10 feet. And I only looked at five or so lots, so I can't speak to the whole neighborhood, but it appears that there are multiple that are under 10.
Thank you. And thank you. If I can have the builder come back up for a quick second. If we said to you, we need the 10-foot side setback, the house would, moving the house five more feet to the south would work, what does that do to your driveway configuration? Does it put a little bend in it, a little elbow, a little curve?
We wouldn't have clearance to enter the garage, if we just, we wouldn't have clearance. We even debated, okay, if we can't do concrete near that preservation zone or at that corner of the preservation zone, would we be allowed to do like pavers or some sort of other materials? That was also not an option to us. We cannot put anything in the preservation zone, not dirt, not trees, nothing. So if we were to move it back to where that 10 feet is, we just wouldn't be able to enter the, we wouldn't be able to enter that, there wouldn't be enough clearance to enter the driveway, in which case, the customer would not want to build here anymore, and that's why we've come this far, to, to request the variance.
Or you would have to do a two-car garage and not a three-car garage?
Correct.
And again, it's outside of the jurisdiction of this committee to make any rulings on the preservation zone. You know, there's nothing we can do about that.
Preservation zone wise, yes, there's nothing that we can do.
Okay. That's the extent of my questions. Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Shapaka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maddie, who, who created the preservation zone?
The preservation zones were established when the plat was created, so whoever initially platted this neighborhood is the one who set the preservation zones.
So George, well, George Parker was the architect for this development. I mean, I could see him creating some of those zones, and in my mind, they are not permanent. They can be adjusted if the Homeowners Association agrees to such a thing. I mean, they, they can tweak those. They have the power to do that.
I'm unsure if that's an option. I just know, in the plat, there's a section with notes, and it said that preservation zones were not to be touched or developed or cleared in any way. So that's what we were basing all of this off of.
All right. Mary, can you come up to the microphone? As the President? The, the trees that are placed there in the front, the, there's a, kind of a real small sidewalk that goes in front of there. With any development on that property, that sidewalk will be enlarged, which will encroach upon the preservation zone, in your mind? There's a little asphalt walk in front of it?
And to apologize, I've only lived in the subdivision for the last 10 years, so I haven't been there through the whole thing, but when the sidewalks were put in as the houses were developed, this was an addition. So maybe Lori is in a better position, Lori's lived there the whole time, maybe she's in a better position to explain how the sidewalk and that asphalt sidewalk went in.
So the asphalt sidewalk will be taken out, and the existing concrete walk will continue from north to south, and it looks to me like that will, might creep into the preservation zone a little bit, or tear out some of the, the plants.
As best as I remember, the Homeowners Association paid for the asphalt drive, asphalt sidewalk to be installed with permission from the owner, when the other sidewalks, when homeowners installed sidewalks, so that children walking back and forth to school had a, a clear path. There's only a sidewalk on one side of the, the street in, along Founder's Ridge Drive, and it's on the west side. I do not know whether the sidewalk intrudes into the preservation zone, and I was not on the board when this was done.
It'll go out. So with the development, that will be removed, and the city is most likely going to ask for that sidewalk to continue, continue on. So it is, should not encroach upon the preservation zone, but that will be done. Do you know if there's any trees in that preservation zone? Is it some kind of foliage or something that Georgia would need to be preserved?
There are trees in the preservation zone. I do not know what the species are. I believe that the staff report said there did not appear to be anything that was significant, any...
Okay. Because I, I believe that you, the HOA or the, you have the power to change that preservation zone, if need be.
No.
In my mind, you'd have to go through a, a documentation to do that, but you can. Personally, I'm doing it for Rush Creek. We're taking away 10 feet along the edge of it, and it's just a matter of filing a new exhibit with a new plat. It's something as simple as that. So if that is something to take a look into, there's authority, you might be able to do it. The trees, square foot. Right, thank you. So Maddie, the, this is just a variance application, so we don't have a house plan. So the fire department did not look at this, and make a comment on this at all, is that correct?
So the fire department does review all of our planning applications, and I believe they just said no comments.
No comment.
Yes.
Please. So Maddie can put up the footprint of the nice little color chart? What's the origin of the footprint that we're looking at? The three-car garage, is that just a house plan that you, you have access to?
So this house plan, we've been working on with a client to design a custom home for them, and this is the plan that they wanted. So we do have a full set of blueprints. Now, we haven't submitted to the HOA or to the city, because we wouldn't be able to build this blueprint if we don't have the variance, so the first course of action we need to take is to see if we can get the variance. Now, if the variance works out, then we can take the next steps, and now if the house is too big in terms of size, or it goes over 30%, the city would obviously comment on that, and we would adjust to align with what's needed.
So the new homeowner selected that, that's not something you're just putting there, and looking for an owner, because you have the house plan, that is something that they, they want on that property?
That's correct. This is a custom home, the customer approached us, this is what they want to build. It's not a, a plant, it's not a spec home that we're building in hopes of selling. They, they love this community, they, they want to be part of it, and that's what they wanted to build, and we're representing them and trying to make that happen.
Okay. No, no more questions. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mako.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few questions. I hate to beat a dead horse here, but on, on the preservation zone, Ms. Kapka, the, do you happen to know, and again, I'm not asking verbatim, but what, what does the plat language say about that preservation zone?
I don't remember it exactly, but I know it says there can't be any development, any clearing, it can't be modified at all. You're not even allowed to clear brush in the preservation zone, you can't touch it at all.
And is there language, and again, I'm not asking for verbatim, but is there, is anything staying that it's perpetual in nature?
I'm unsure. I would assume yes.
And in your experience, if we were to try and adjust this preservation zone, it would have to go through a replat, correct? Because this is a recorded plat, so it's, it's an existing thing, correct?
Correct.
So someone just can't, you know, arbitrarily come in here and start adjusting lines, they'd have to go through a replat process, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The, do you happen to know the, the existing easement there on the north side, the five-foot easement? Do you happen to know what type of easement that is? Is it utility, cable, sanitary?
I'm not sure. Only the one to the north is listed as a utility easement. I'm not sure what the easement shown in yellow are. It probably says on the plat, but it wasn't provided on the site plan.
Okay, fair enough. And then, on that north side, is that, is that, is that, there are existing trees there, correct? So in, in theory, there was some buffer, if you will?
Yes.
Okay. Question for the applicant, real quick. So when we, you, we discussed a little bit about clearance with the, with the driveway.
Yes.
Let's kind of delve a little bit more into that. So what, when we talk about clearance, what are, what are we talking about?
One more time, please.
What, what do we talk about with clearance? Please help me explain, understand that.
So when you, when you go to approach the, the garage on the left, if, if we were to push that plan within that red box, you would probably have seven feet between the preservation zone and where that garage is, and a car wouldn't be able to turn to get in there without encroaching on the preservation zone.
So it would be the car or the driveway?
The driveway, we could control how big we do the driveway, but if you move the house to, to the left, that, the distance between the preservation zone and the garage is going to decrease. So when we pour that driveway there, if we pour seven feet from the garage, you're not going to be able to, to drive in there, so we wouldn't be able to do it as a garage.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
If you don't mind, I, I do want to mention something. I don't know the exact language from the plat, but it did say that somewhere in, within that language, that unless it's authorized by a city official, now what that means, I'm not quite sure. We've also tried to look into that, so if it was like for construction, or for certain needs, that it can be authorized by city official, but who that city official or how that process would work, it doesn't go in depth on it, on the plat plan.
Okay. Another, another follow-up question to Ms. Kapka. When was this planted? What year?
Either early 90s or late 80s, I believe.
Okay. All right, no further questions.
Thank you. Ms. Poyet.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to continue beating this dead horse on the preservation zone issue. So it's my understanding that if you want to modify a plat, then you have to go through the county. Basically, you have to go through the Economic Development Department, and then you have to get approval from the Board of Commissioners, the County Commissioners. So basically, you're, you're kind of asking them for a variance, the way you're asking us for a variance. And then at that point, I believe you could restructure that preservation zone, you could redraw the lines. Have you looked into that at all? I guess I'm asking the builder. Has that been considered?
So we, we did consider. Our first course of action was to meet with the city officials, the engineering department, the, the decision makers here in Gahanna, and we, that, that's the first thing we focused on. Is there a way we can change the preservation zone? Is there any way we can remove it? Is there anything we can do? And the answer that we got was no.
What about the county? Have you, did you meet with the county officials?
I did not meet with the county, no.
Okay. I mean, it's, from my experience, that's how you would be able to redraw those lines, so I don't know if it's worth maybe doing that, and seeing, I don't know, I've never done it myself, so I don't know how long the process is or how complicated it is. It's probably very similar to what you're doing here, but that might be a consideration. And just given the fact that that preservation zone is in the front yard, I mean, that might be something they would be willing to consider.
I mean, if, if that's something that you guys think they would consider, when we meet with city officials, is that something that they would have knowledge on to direct us there?
I really don't know what their knowledge base is, so I can't, I can't speak to that, but I think it would be worth a phone call to the county, to the, the Economic Development Department, and maybe seeing if there's any options there.
Yeah, on, on our end, we'll definitely, we'll definitely make that phone call and see if there's options. If we could figure out a solution for the preservation zone, that's ideally the way we would want to go, but it's, from our understanding, there is no solution, and that's why we went down this route.
Right.
Now, if you believe that there may be, then we're definitely going to reach out and exercise that option as well.
It's just something that I was thinking about, might be a consideration for that.
Yep.
Okay. I don't think I have any further questions, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you. So I do not have any questions about the preservation zone, so I will not continue to beat that dead horse. Although, I do appreciate when Ms. Kapka was referring to the late 80s, early 90s, she did not rub it in, that it was before she was born. So thank you. I do have a question for the, the Homeowners Association. So we've already picked on Ms. Frankovich and Ms. Jax, so Mr. Kaiser, question for you, on behalf of the Homeowners Association.
Yes.
So the Homeowners Association owns land on Lily Pond Court, Founder's Ridge Drive, and Morgan Lane, so some preserves in common areas, according to the auditor's map.
Yes, we do.
So hearing that there was a desire to keep the, this lot undeveloped, why hasn't the Homeowners Association considered buying it?
Well, the lot would probably, I don't know what the property valuation is right now, but it would... now, but it would be, you know, around at least $50,000 and, and we don't have that kind of cash to come up with, number one. And number two, we, we're not trying to keep the lot from being developed. I mean, I live next door to it and I, you know, I, I don't have a problem with having a house there. I've lived here 25 years and it's been vacant, but, but no, we're not trying to, to prevent anything. We just want to preserve the character of our neighborhood.
Fair enough.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, any, any further?
Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan, I was trying to find your slip, so feel, feel free to reply.
The comment that I was...
Please come up to the lectern.
The comment that I was going to make is, the suggestion about following up with the county, about trying to get replat, I mean, if it would help, I think what you've heard from the HOA board is that we would certainly be willing to go with the builder to the county and express our, our approval of making some revisions to that preservation zone so that, one, it can be built on, fits the setbacks that are supposed to be with it, and still takes care of taking, making, making it a much beautiful neighborhood, right? Because if we have another community, another family home in there, that's always a great thing. So that would, that would be my thought, is that if there's some way that the builder and the HOA can go together to the county and express that we're willing to work jointly in reference to this, if that works, I think that would be a great way to go after it.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Shapaka.
So the Franklin County Commission would handle that request and it is something that you would have to provide an exhibit. And it sounds like we've got a perfect opportunity for the new homeowner to provide that exhibit. You would just have to have a separate sign sheet of all the properties within that community. You would just sign your approval of it. So the Franklin County Commission isn't holding anything to letter of law. I mean, they want to, sort of all people in your community, if you guys are in agreement to change that, they usually obliged to that deal. And it's just a matter of creating a document of how much you want to be shaved off and we'll see how the variance goes, because it might have to be a little bit more in case it doesn't go through. But that is, the Franklin County Commission is the people who will handle that. And it usually is spearheaded by the person who has the property, but the HOA will have a role in signing the document for their review. Very good.
Are there any further questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mako.
Don't know if this is a question for Ms. Kapka or Mr. Roth, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but aren't, isn't this, isn't the city the plating authority?
We approve plats, you know, before it gets recorded with the county. But this issue came up, I think it was in a different area where there was the same notation in the plat that a city official could approve it. And we didn't, in looking at that, we have no idea why they would put something like that in a plat, because it's, when they put in a preservation zone or they put in setbacks into the actual plat, it is usually up to the developer or the homeowners association. A lot of these, once there's 75% billed out, the developer turns it over to the homeowners association. It's up to them then to enforce that. So I don't think there is any way a city official could say yes to this, that, to the preservation zone being decreased.
Well, I guess my, my question or concern is that, based on my experience, I've never experienced where a plat in a municipal authority. A plat in a municipal corporation, and that municipal corporation has plating responsibility and authority, would, would, would cede that power to the county commission.
Yeah. I don't know if that happens when the plat gets recorded or not. I couldn't give you an answer to that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a follow-up for Maddie. The variance is to go from 15 feet to five. I'm only hearing 10 feet from everybody. Where did 15 come from?
15 feet is the side yard setback for principal structures for sites that are zoned R1 in the zoning code. The 10 feet that they're referring to, I believe, is some language in their deed.
Would you like to ask a question of the homeowners association, Mr. Shapaka?
Yes, they raised their hand, I just, they had a comment on that, so.
Feel free to ask the question. Yeah.
I believe that the plat has 10-foot side setbacks as well as the deed restrictions. So to the extent that the plat supersedes the generic R1 requirements, the number for side setbacks would be 10 feet.
Thank you. No more questions, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions from the commission?
I have one question.
Ms. Pauier.
For the builder, please. The, I was just looking up on the auditor site, the current owners of the property, are those, are those your clients?
No, the current owner, he used to be a builder, he's now retired.
So he's selling this lot to your clients, correct?
Correct.
But they're not going to buy it until they know whether they can build on it?
Correct.
Is that the situation?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Tamarkin.
Kapka, can you pull up the color? Anastasia, we're going to have you back up here again. I just want to stick with, you know, again, if we, let's say we said 10-foot setback. So if the house moved five foot to the south, to the left, you would also be able then to move back a little because of the way the preserve in the back is angled. All right? Does that change your access to the driveway? So again, you know, go back to what we said, there's a, the zoning code says 15-foot, the plat says 10. Let's just hypothetically assume this commission would agree to the 10, but not to the five, but we'll give you the variance from the 15 to the 10.
We, we've tried it with the 10. It would increase it, but it still wouldn't be sufficient enough to get the car.
To get a car.
We need about 17 feet.
And what do you, so you have 17 foot in this drawing now?
Yes.
But if the house moved five foot to the left?
It would be...
And a couple feet to the back?
I believe last we calculated it was around 12.
So you're still, you're still five foot short from the radius of being able to turn a car into that third car garage?
Yeah, I mean, if we could just take a corner of that preservation, leave everything, just the corner, just so we can make that turn, that's all we would really need, but we can do that.
And we would love to give that to you.
I know.
That would make everything very easy for all of us. But we, we have no authority.
I understand.
We have no authority to make that decision. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions? Seeing none, is there a motion on the application?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve application V dash 0004 dash 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Mako. Is there a second?
Second, Shapaka.
Thank you, Mr. Shapaka. Discussion on the motion, Mr. Tamarkin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to say at this point, I'm going to have to be a no vote on this. I think five is very close to the property line. When we do see the overview, I'm not totally convinced that the two house, neighboring houses are, certainly I don't think they're 15 feet from the property line, so there's probably was a variance issued at one point. Yeah, right here. So, you know, certainly, these two houses are pretty close to the yellow line, but without knowing for sure that the, they are, I'm going to have to say, let's see if we can pursue some other options. Let's see if, whether going to the county or working with the city could get this preservation zone. Again, there's just a little triangle in the corner, removed from the preservation zone so you can get that garage, another option, again, I'm not the architect, but, you know, that you flip the one-car garage to the right and the two-car garage to the left, you know, to maybe then give you that few foot you need inside the garage instead of outside the garage. So I would accept 10-foot. I'm not going to accept the five at this stage. Maybe we reconsider after a little more work's put into this.
Thank you, Mr. Shapaka.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm kind of in the same boat. The, the founder with the, George Parker laying that out, he had 10-foot in mind, even though the code said 15. George had a pretty good vision on what he produced and I'm pretty much going to hold to that. The five-foot is a no. I'm not in favor of that. I would be in favor of the 10, but I would say that the unique lot should have a unique solution to it and things can be arranged on this to fit the lot better. But I, I know that the preservation can be tweaked a little bit with documentations, but, so for the variance, I'm, I'm not in favor.
Mr. Mako.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, full disclosure, this Founder's Ridge is, is on my regular running route, so I've gone by this, I've gone by this lot many times in the past 13 years. So I'm, I'm very familiar with the, with the, with the neighborhood and layout. I'm going to agree with my, with my colleagues, I think, really, we have to believe in the spirit of, of the way this thing was platted back in the day with the 10 feet. I think that, you know, we can go back and we can, you know, make this, make this thing work and make it a nice product at the end of the day. Again, knowing that neighborhood, it's, it's, it's nice. I mean, no doubt about it. But I definitely think that we can, you know, the, the architects can go back and, you know, work within the confines of the, of the plat, so I'm also going to be a no. Thank you.
Ms. Pauier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also would agree with everyone up here. I would like to see some more options pursued, to see what can be done to stay within the confines of the plat or to move the lines of the preservation area, if that's some, a possibility that can be pursued with the county, to at least start that process and see what can be done with it. That's, if that's the, what people, if that's what your client is willing to do and that's what you said everyone is trying to do, I would at least like to see more due diligence done on that end before I'd be willing to any kind of variance. Thank you.
Thank you. So my comments, my comments on the application are, I, we heard a lot about the, the spirit of Mr. Parker and his intent, but we heard, we are here to evaluate our existing code, not the spirit, but the letter. So I will be in favor of this request because it is a very unique circumstance and the conditions today do not allow for the property owner to proceed under our current guidelines. So the criteria, in my opinion, for a variance is met and I will be in support of it. And with that, I'll ask for a roll call.
Mako.
No.
Shapaka.
No.
Hicks.
Yes.
Pauier.
No.
Tamarkin.
No.
Motion fails. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Ms. Maguire.
No.
No unfinished business, any new business. We'll now proceed to official reports, starting with our assistant city attorney.
Nothing to report at this time, Mr. Chair.
Anything from the planning department?
Frank Hall, planning manager, we have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Council liaison, Ms. Pauier.
Yes, thank you. So council has considered, if you all recall, we voted on the 22nd to recommend approval to council to change Part 11 zoning code, section 11117.10 ye 1A. And they are also considering that as well. They are holding a public hearing on that on March 3rd. Director Blackford actually spoke at the February 10th committee of the whole meeting and talked, there was a lot of questions asked, what type of improvements would be relevant under this zoning code section change, and also when adherence to the code requirements would actually be necessary. Basically, it was, you know, kind of what he told us, that more minor permits would not be necessary, would just save some time for the, the homeowners that are trying to modify their properties. And then there was also a update given on 825 Tech Center Drive. The senior director of operations, Kevin Schultz, gave that update. Basically, just showed some progress pictures, which are pretty interesting to see the progress of the building coming along. And I believe he's doing that monthly. And that is all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The mayor is not in attendance tonight, so as chair, I had two things I wanted to address. The first is, the planning commission received an email from Mr. Van Meter regarding a couple of opportunities in the, the local region for the planning commission to consider. One was a morphecy event, another was a visit Gehanna meeting. So please check your email for the Mr. Van Meter's invitation and consider attending one or both if you're available. The second item is our decision on the one-church variance from a couple meetings ago is being appealed to the BZA. It has not yet been scheduled for a meeting, but stay tuned for that appeal to be heard. Are there any correspondences or actions to address?
No, sir.
We'll now ask, open it up to comments from the commission. Mr. Tamarkin.
No comments.
Mr. Shapaka.
No comments.
Mr. Mako.
I do believe that Friday is Valentine's Day, so make sure you go and hug your significant other because you never know what life's going to throw you.
Ms. Pauier.
I can't follow that up, so I don't have any comments.
I have nothing further, so seeing no further business to come before the commission, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We adjourn, thank you.